It is Tuesday, January 18th, 1:00 PM. This is a regularly scheduled City Commission meeting. Do we have a quorum?
Yes, Mayor.
Right, thank you. Today is Commissioner Ortiz's turn to do the pledge of allegiance and invocation. Stand with us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Stand with me. Please Heavenly Father be with us today as we go through business. We ask that you be in our hearts, be in our minds as we make decisions today. We ask that you be with our community, Lord, be with those who are in sickness and just give them the strength to push through it, Lord. Be with the families, be with our first responders and our city, Lord. We ask all this in Jesus' name. Amen.
All right, we're to the approval of minutes. Is there any changes to the minutes that anybody saw? Unless there is any, we'll approve them as presented. All right. Next is public comment. This is a time for anybody who has anything to say that is not on the agenda to come up and talk. We have 30 minutes overall and please limit yourself to five minutes. And then if you do come up, please unstate your name. Is there anybody here that can comment?
If it's on the agenda later.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I don't think anybody's moving in the other room either. All right, we'll move on. And I'll just go through this. Petitions, no petitions, and so report of city manager.
Okay. Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. Number seven, reports of the city manager. Letters A, B, and C are all staff reports. And if you have any questions on any of those, we'd be happy to answer them. Number D is the city has received correspondence from Cox Communication regarding some of their channel lineup changes. And then number eight, meetings of note. You've noticed several meetings there that you guys are probably interested in and please let Ceylin know your attendance like always and then she'll make arrangements for that. If there's no questions on any of that, then the next item would be 9A, which would be the appropriation ordinance. And if approved, that would be appropriation ordinance number 2547-2022A.
I'd like to make a motion to approve appropriation ordinance number 2547-2022A.
Is there a second? Second. All right, it's moved in second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. All opposed? That passes. Thank you.
Okay. The next item, Mr. Mayor, is 10A. The governing body is asked to consider and approve a resolution designating banking institutions to be used as depositories for the city's public funds. And if approved, this would be resolution number 2899-2022. Jared's going to talk about that.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. In the past, as an annual practice, the City Garden City adopts a resolution at the beginning of each year. It's considered to be best practice in accounting and public financial reporting to list the institutions that are depositories for the city's public funds. This wasn't done in 2021, but it was done in 2020 and prior. And so this list is the same as what was approved in 2020, with the only change being that Equity Bank number six has replaced, it's a new, the new name. Other than that, this list is the same as what we've been using in the past. Alternatives are to approve the resolution as presented or to deny it, and staff recommendation would be to approve the resolution.
I make a motion we approve resolution number 2899-2022.
Second.
We got a motion in a second. Is there any discussion? All right. Very none? All those in favor say aye. All opposed? Right. Thank you, Jared.
The next item under 12A is under new business, is that the governing body is asked to consider and approve amending the 2022 equipment purchase in the electric department funds. And I'll go to the podium on this. I'm more used to standing on this.
Yes, Mayor and Commissioner, in the 2022 approved budget, you approved purchases for vehicles in all of the departments, but in this particular, when you approved to purchase two four-wheel drive replacement pickup trucks and then one digger derrick truck in the amount of $185,000. The digger derrick truck, for reference, is the Boone truck with the big auger on it that can set poles and transformers. And while I still plan to replace the two pickup trucks this year, the digger derrick just had his transmission replaced in 2021, and we don't believe it needs to be replaced now until 2024 or 2025. Staff requests authorizations to purchase a sole-source, heavy-duty, three-reel cable trailer from Real Strong Utility Fleet for $130,122.68 instead of replacing the digger derrick truck. This cable trailer has the capability of handling up to 10,000-pound reels of cable, and it would be used in the process of installing the heavy cable from substations. And the particular example would be to the Empirical Foods site. If approved, then this trailer would be delivered in about 16 weeks. Alternatives would be to approve the sole-source purchase of the three-reel cable trailer for $130,122.68 from Real Strong Utility Fleet, or do not approve the purchase, and staff recommends alternative one. The funding for this would come from new equipment, other that has a current balance of $275,000 in that account. And I'll answer any questions you may have.
So Mike, I know that you've, one example is Empirical Foods. Do you have a real truck now that you'd be replacing, or is this just an upgrade or one that's a larger?
Yeah, this would be a much, this is, what we have now is three individual, like an A-frame type thing that's chained down to a trailer to hold the three reels. And there was a diagram in the packet that showed the picture of this. It's actually a standalone trailer that's designed to handle these, so it'll be a new type, but certainly replace that old way of doing it.
I make a motion we approve the sole-source purchase of the three-reel cable trailer for $130,122.68 from Real Strong Utility Fleet.
Right, is there a second?
Second.
There's no other seconds. Any further questions or discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye. All opposed? That passes. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, the next item on your agenda is the governing body is asked to consider and reject the only bid received for 2022 solid waste rearload trash truck. Background on this is staff advertised and opened a bid for new 2022 rearload trash truck on December 27th of 2021. Only one submission was received from Key Equipment Company of Kansas City, Kansas, in the amount of $241,552.50. However, the delivery time was 90 weeks out. If accepted, it would mean that the truck would not be delivered until, at the earliest, October 14th of 2023. Key Equipment has agreed that the lead time on this truck is extremely long and stressed to staff that it has nothing to do with them. It all has to do with receiving the cabin chassis from the manufacturer, who I think, like everybody else, just can't get materials that they need to complete their stuff. The Key Equipment also understands that the city cannot wait 90 weeks to have a new rearload trash truck, and it completely understands should the bid be rejected due to the delivery date. Should the governing body reject this bid, then staff will present a lease option to obtain a needed rear-loaded trash truck in a more reasonable timeframe. So the alternatives would be to accept the bid from Key Equipment for $241,552.50, reject the bid from Key Equipment due to the 90-week delivery schedule. Staff recommends alternative number two. While there is no financial impact to the solid waste budget if the bid is rejected, if the bid is accepted, then funding will come from the solid waste fiscal year 2022 budget, new equipment vehicles that has a current balance of $290,000 in it. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have on that.
Yeah, I move that we reject the bid from Key Equipment Company for $241,552.50 due to the 90-week delivery schedule.
Right, so here's a second?
I'll second.
Right, got to move in a second. Any further discussions? All those in favor say aye. All opposed? That's passed.
The next item, Mr. Mayor, is the governing body is to consider and approve a work order number 2104 for the design of two offset water wells to be completed by professional engineering consultants for $109,900. And Mr. Fred Jones will deal with that.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. In 2021, the Water Department performed maintenance of several wells in our water supply system. And as a result of those maintenance activities, it's apparent that two wells are at the end of their service life and must be replaced. This replacement is referred to as an offset well, so we're not acquiring a new water right. We're utilizing the same water right that the city has access to. We're just basically drilling a new hole in the ground in order to retrieve the water. Both wells are used for public drinking water supply, and so a licensed professional engineer must design the well piping system, and it must be reviewed by KDHE and approved by them prior to us drilling it. The last time the city had an offset well drilled was in 2017, and when the City Commission approved the replacement of well number 31. It's on Fulton Street. The engineering proposal presented to the governing body today refers to Sandhill's well number one and Chestnut well number 16. Both wells have significant failures in the well construction. That means the casing essentially is failing on those wells, and it will require a replacement of the entire well. Sandhill's well number one is authorized for 808 acre feet. That translates to 263.2 million gallons per year and has been in service since 1981. Based on historical records, we believe Chestnut well number 16 was constructed in 1968. The water rights accompanying the Chestnut well are shared with two other wells, well 30 and well 31. And the combined authorization of all three wells is 1,680, bouncing back and forth between five vocals, 1,680 acre feet or 547 million gallons per year. We anticipate Chestnut well probably could contribute 300 to 400 acre feet based off the typical usage of our other two wells. So the other two wells in this water right are source wells that fulfill our contract with Wheatland Electric Cooperative. The wells together represent potential water production resource of over 360 million gallons per year. The attached proposal from professional engineering consultants will include the following necessary design services for KDHE approval, construction administration, and assistance with the required application and documentation to the Division of Water Resources for the well offset application. Because we're moving the point of diversion, that has to also go through the Division of Water Resources for their review. The services described in the work order submitted by PEC will not exceed $109,900. This amount does not include resident project representative services as described as a separate line item within the proposal. That would be an inspection line item. We're not exercising that option today. Alternatives, approve work order number 21-04 for the design of two offset water wells to be completed by professional engineering consultants, PA, for $109,900, or decline to approve the work order number 21-04 submitted by professional engineering consultants and direct staff to present an alternate solution at a future meeting of the governing body. We recommend alternative number one to approve the work order number 21-04 for the design of two offset wells to be completed by professional engineering consultants, PA, for $109,900. Now, the project will be funded from the Water Fund, Sundry Engineering Fees line item. And the GL code is there for your reference, and the fund balance is $150,000. Any questions?
I have another question. So PEC, we retain them already as our water experts, and then that's why they didn't have to do the bid process, just wanting to make sure for the offset wells?
Yeah, this falls underneath the master agreement that we already have with PEC. This is, would be a work order underneath that existing master agreement.
I make a motion we approve the work order number 21-04.
If there's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
All right. Is there any further discussion?
Fred, I have just a couple of questions. I understand that something with this mass has to be replaced. What is that? Does that pose any issues for, like during construction or during water shut-off of any pressurized other lines that are connected or anything like that?
No. The wells, especially the Sandhill's wells, are completely segregated from the water distribution system. There's no customers that have any access to the pipelines coming from the Sandhill's until past our reservoirs, which are located where the skate park is. So there's no connections that would be disrupted. Sandhill's one is one of the southernmost wells as well, so all, the remainder of the wells would be operable. It really would be a matter of just, I guess what we're anticipating is a very short tie-in length because we don't want to move those wells any further than needed in order to make sure that it doesn't create an issue of the Division of Water Resources. So these moves will all be less than 300 feet. And the Chestnut well would be similar. We would be able to isolate those from the system while well construction is occurring.
So will the wells be capped, the old wells, or will they actually be removed?
The old wells are plugged.
So they'll be plugged in, so they won't be?
That's the one option is we, they will be backfilled and plugged, and then that's recorded with the Division of Water Resources as well.
Anything else?
Thank you.
All right. All those in favor say aye. All opposed? That passes. Thank you, Fred.
I guess, Mr. Mayor, 12D, governing body is asked to consider and approve a 12-month lease agreement with Rush Refuse Systems for a rearload trash truck.
The delivery time to purchase a rearload trash truck, which you just went through and did not accept, that bid was 90 weeks out, and the current rearload truck will not be operable that long without some very expensive repairs. Staff researched and obtained three quotes for leasing a new 2021 rearload trash truck that could be delivered to Garden City in three to four weeks. The lowest lease price is $4,500 per month or $54,000 per year. At the end of the 12-month lease, half of the $54,000 paid, or $27,000, could go towards the purchase of the truck, which the total purchase is 191,000, but if you took in the $27,000 deduct, that price would be $164,000 for a truck that's one year old. Or the city could return the truck, walk away, and we don't have to worry about that anymore. The actual purchase price of that truck is less than the purchase price of the truck that we bid. You can see the three bids there. Rush Cream Refuse Systems was $4,500 a month. Big Truck Rentals out of Tampa, Florida was $6,500 a month. And RDK Truck Rentals out of Tampa, Florida was $5,800 per month, and they're all within the two to three to four week delivery timeframe. So alternatives would be to authorize the leasing of a new 2021 Hino L7 mounted with the McNeilus 20-yard Metro Pack Compactor for $4,500 per month for 12 months. Do not authorize, the agreement would be your other alternative. Staff recommends alternative one, and if approved, the $4,500 per month or the $54,000 per year will come out of the solid waste budget, new equipment, GL code there for reference, and that current line item budget has $290,000 in it. And happy to answer any questions that you have.
Well, I read the lease agreement, but it didn't indicate anything about, as far as repairs or any type of maintenance, will that be our responsibility or will that be their responsibility?
No, they did send it, I apologize if I didn't put that in there. Pretty detailed list of what we have to do, make sure the oil gets changed and make sure it gets greased properly. And as long as we do that, then we adhere to the lease agreement. We've, I had Tyler Patterson, the operations manager for Public Works, he went through all of that and agreed that we could do it within our own shop, so.
I authorize the leasing of the new 2021 Hino L7 mounted with a McNeilus 20-year yard Metro Pack for $4,500 per month for 12 months.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, it's moved in second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. All opposed? That passes. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, the next item is the governing body is asked to consider and approve the Traffic Advisory Committee's recommendation regarding 30-minute parking requests at 112 North Main Street. So the background here, the governing body, back in September 19th of 2017, considered the Traffic Advisory Committee's recommendation from their September 5th, 2017 meeting to allow the installation of 30-minute parking signs as requested by the owners of LNL Flooring, which is located at 112 North Main Street. The governing body asked staff at that time to consider angle parking on Main Street and report back to the governing body. The Kansas Department of Transportation, which is involved because that's a KDOT road, agreed to allow Main Street to be restripped and to include angled parking on Main Street. No 30-minute parking signs were installed. So again, in LNL Flooring, in November 2021, asked the Traffic Advisory Committee to consider their request for two 30-minute parking signs to be installed in front of their business. LNL Flooring has been concerned with employees or customers of other businesses located adjacent to them parking in front of their store for hours on time, or hours at a time. LNL Flooring requested that the time-restricted parking spots be placed in front of the small existing overhead door used to move items, rolls of carpet, other large items in and out of their store. LNL Flooring began placing orange cones in the parking spaces in front of their store so no one could park there. City staff and the Garden City Police Department let LNL Flooring know that they could not do that, that it's a public street, and any legally authorized motor vehicle could park there. LNL Flooring was accommodating, and they removed the cones as requested. The Traffic Advisory Committee did not have a quorum and therefore did not meet at their December meeting, 2021, to hear the request. LNL Flooring began to place flyers on vehicles and advise people who were parking there that they could not park there for long periods of time. Again, staff and the Garden City Police Department advised LNL Flooring to stop that practice, which they did. Mid-December 2021, city staff installed two temporary 30-minute parking signs as a temporary measure until the Traffic Advisory Committee could consider their request. However, they were removed on December 23rd, 2021, as complaints continued to come from the neighboring businesses regarding the temporary signs and questions on how was it being enforced. The property owners were notified that the Traffic Advisory Committee would meet January 4th, 2022, at the Utility Service Center and would take comments for and against the request. Three individuals were present and voiced their strong opposition to what was being proposed, and no one represented LNL Flooring at the meeting. After considerable discussion amongst the committee, this is the Traffic Advisory Committee, with input from the Garden City Police Department, the Traffic Advisory Committee voted against recommending that the governing body approve the request. Alternatives would be to approve the recommendations of the Traffic Advisory Board to deny the request for two 30-minute parking signs to be installed at 112 North Main Street. Or alternative two, do not approve the recommendations of the Traffic Advisory Board to deny the request for two parking signs to be installed. And option number three would be to direct staff to seek other alternatives. Staff has no recommendation. We have representatives, I believe, from LNL Flooring here and representatives that are opposed to it. Should you choose to install the signs, the fiscal impact would be about $450 to the city to install the signs, and we currently have a budget of $15,000 to cover that. And I'll turn it over to you, Mr. Mayor, as how you want to close here.
So do we have any questions for Mike before we open it up to let some of the public speak? All right, thank you. So we'll open this up for, if anybody wants to come in and have a comment on this, please limit your talking to a few minutes, five minutes max. And when you do come up, please state your name.
Hi, my name is Gil Lewis. I'm here representing LNL Flooring. Not to be argumentative, but we never contacted travelers, whatever the committee that posted the 30-minute signs. We were unaware of the day they were going in. We were unaware of the amount of time that was going to be located, or mandated. We're unaware of any of that. We're unaware of the day they were removed also. The thing that we understand is for our neighbors, 30 minutes is not enough time for them to do their business correctly. We have a, which are familiar with the businesses that are there, so we totally understand that, that. And this has never been a consumer or a customer parking argument. Where we struggle is we are stuck with limited space because we have a business, a building that has multiple businesses in it. So that makes it more constrained because of that reason. We also understand that customers could park wherever they want. We don't have the authority or the ability to say, no, this is ours, no, this is yours. That's not what this is about. What this is about is we would, don't understand why the owners and the employees cannot park there for hours upon end. The way we do our business is we need access to that front door. If we have customers come in and say, hey, we want 100-foot of carpet, we understand if there's a customer car there, well, they're just going to have to wait until the customer leaves. But if it's an employee or an owner's car there that sits there for eight hours, we don't have that option, so we lose ourselves. The other thing that we struggle with is, these are the steps that I have done personally. I went and I've talked to them. I've asked them, will you please move your car? That went on for a period of time. I went and also, the second thing that I did is, okay, I called the police. The police, this car's been here, could you identify who it is? So they will move it. And then the third one that we have done is, we're here. And unfortunately, I don't want to be here. One of my job titles is to address problems. I hate problems, but I don't hate my job. But the, to me, it's a pretty simple solution. If the owners and employees don't park, we've only got 14 spots. If the owners, employees don't park on Main Street, I'm not here talking to you today. But they seem not to understand that they're taking it away from them and us both. This isn't all about LNL. It's about a viable Main Street so our customers have a positive experience. And that's what we all achieve for, this would be a mute point. If we didn't have customers, I wouldn't be here. The problem that we have is now it's kind of a, our voice has really never been heard because we've been pretty silent. All we are asking is to somehow limit the parking so that the customer have an opportunity to shop in Garden City. We had a customer came in from Colby yesterday, elderly people. They told me not to tell you their age, but they had to walk two blocks, which sometimes that's just the way it is. But I look out in our parkway and seven of those spots are by employees or owners taking those spots. And to me, it's a pretty simple solution. Just don't park there, have consideration for the other businesses that are there. Now, if it's a customer, we have never complained about a customer. One thing did happen, which was a negative. One thing did happen, which was a negative, and we didn't, by posting it, the police have to enforce it. I'm against the thirty minute parking because that's not viable time for our neighbors to do their job. But we do need to address some avenue to let the other owners and employees know that it's a big hindrance to us and our customers and their customers, they have nowhere to park. And that's where we're at. How you do that, it's complicated. Because if they would just buy in and say, okay, we're not going to park there, like I said, I wouldn't be here. So far, that hasn't happened. And invariably, it's happened the opposite way of the comment made to me in front of the police man that was called in is, my car's not hurting anyone. It's parked in front of L and L's garage. It's not hurting, it's not hurting anyone, but the customer has nowhere to park. And that's our point that we're making, is all we want is for the customer to have a good experience, for our customer to be able to get to our front door, and that's it. And we understand, we can't say, okay, this is L and L's spot. This is their spot. That's not what we're asking. The only thing we're asking, maybe a two hour, hour, they would probably have a better idea of how much time they need than I do because I don't know how they do their business. But when the car sits there for seven, eight hours, it's hard to get our job done. And that's kind of the point we're making. And I've never, we've never, we did a poor job of communicating to you guys. And about the meeting, we missed it because we didn't know anything about it. So that's why we didn't, if I would have known something, I would have been there. And we have not once contacted anybody to post signs. We have not contacted anybody to take signs down. That's not true. And we did, Trevor did, he posted a paper in a wiper, but that was after the signs were installed. The sign was there. He went and put a paper and asked her, please abide by this sign. That's all that was. And so some of it is true, but we didn't know anything about meeting. We didn't know anything about signs. We didn't request any signs be put up. That's not true. We did not do that.
Any questions for Mr. Lewis?
Gil, is this a overhead door? Is it for loading and unloading then? Should, should it not be used for parking?
Well, we use it once in a while, but we have taken steps to alleviate the problem. We're putting in another garage door in the alley at our cost, obviously, to help with that problem. But again, the loading zone is probably not going to help because if we put in a loading zone, we're going to take out three more spots and it's already confined. I mean, that's, I, I mean, we would love it because now we could control a little bit of the parking, but I don't think that would be fair to our neighbors. You know, we take away three spots and we have limited space. And the main problem that we have is we have numerous business, numerous businesses in one location. That's what the problem is. It's a good problem because we have a viable Main Street. But when they, when you take five businesses and put them in one spot and their employees and their owners park on Main Street, that limits the consumer's chance to park there.
Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Lewis? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other? Okay.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I'm Nate Morrison. Congratulations, Mayor Dick, Vice Mayor Euler. So this, this issue has been kind of ongoing for the last five years. It kind of started when we were, when we first moved in. It's kind of been vacant on that side of Main Street, the southeast corner of Main and Fulton there. The new businesses that have come in, a lot of them do take more than an hour, some up to two hours. One of them's in aesthetic medicine, the other, another lady does eyelashes. Big Brothers, Big Sisters. There is a lot of people that park there for an extended period of time, not just owners and things like that. I am guilty a little bit of parking up front, but that's because I do unload and load and carry stuff in when I'm building new rooms, things like that. I, I don't think I've ever got a visit from L and L as far as regarding, hey, can we do something? Can you have your employees park? We, we have our employees parked down by the train station across the street in the parking lot on Seventh Street. I've talked to some of the neighbors and stuff and they've agreed to kind of try and avoid that, avoid parking out front. I don't believe thirty minute parking is going to fix this or honestly even any kind of timed regulation sign because for one, the policing that that takes to enforce and then the precedence that that sets for the rest of downtown to not their own thirty minute, hour, two hour parking signs kind of seems like something that will run away very quickly. I don't really have a whole lot else to bring up about it. It's, it's, it's kind of an unfortunate thing that's been happening and, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else here to speak to this? Melissa?
Good afternoon. My name is Melissa Gallegos. I'm the Executive Director of Garden City Downtown Vision. And this was recently brought up to my attention within the past few months of this. However, I do recall that this was an issue that took place among the Board of Directors quite a few years ago. And it's, it's been an ongoing issue at that. A lot of it, I can't, I don't have, I guess, things recorded or dates or times or anything of specific incidences that took place. But there has been concern of, of issues of harassment for customers and that has been brought up to my attention on multiple occasions from multiple different businesses. Again, I do not have record as to when those types of took, took place and whatnot, but there was an instance where a customer was asked to move a car and she had to stop for her appointment and get out there and move. I do not agree with the thirty minute parking as was said earlier just because of the businesses around them that do have appointment timeframes that skip the clock. There's at least an hour. The Miller Aesthetics, there's, you know, hour to two hours. The Big Brothers, Big Sisters, when they have meetings and things like that. We, we want a growing downtown and this is just one of the growing pains that we have and one of the issues that we have is as new businesses are coming, we just have to accommodate and we have to be as respectful to each other and diplomatic with each other as possible. I hope that we can come to a conclusion and that will make everybody happy, but this is a public parking situation and I, and I kind of agree with the precedence that was set if there was a timeframe parking sign put out. Our Main Street has been known for welcoming and, and being open to, to many different businesses in, in our community and it would be sad to see those signs or even parking meters come up later in the future. You know, we have a very free parking situation downtown. Yes, you may have to walk a couple of blocks, but if you go to any major city in a downtown area, you're walking for many, many blocks. So I think we're in a very good situation here, but I do hope that we can come to a respectful agreement among the businesses, but I, I do not recommend the timeframe for that.
Thank you, Melissa. I just said, thank you.
Oh, thank you.
May I, may I just one? On the harassment, what happened was we had to, this is what made us realize thirty minute parking's not going to work. The police were called because she would not move her vehicle. And so what ended up happening, which was unseen, is the customer is in the middle of whatever they do. I mean, she had stuff on her face and she was led to believe that she has to move her vehicle and that was what she was talking about. We have never harassed anybody. The only time it's ever, in their minds, it's been harassment is when they park on our lot behind us. That is a private lot and it has no parking. The harassment was the police officer coming and saying, hey, you have to move your car. And there's no if, that's, and that's why the time of thirty minutes will not work because their procedures take longer to do that. But the reason why we're here is because we can't get our customer base in and we can't play nice with each other because I don't know why. It's ridiculous, in my opinion, that we're here, but we need access. And as long as it stays the way it is, we don't have that.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? We did receive a letter from Don Oberheim. Did everybody get a chance to read that over? All right, since we're going long, I won't take the time to read it, but it does outline some of the stuff I think that Mr. Morrison said as well. So?
I do agree with some of the statements that were, I mean, obviously spoke out here today and I, I mean, a lot has to do with our city growing and the growing pains, as Melissa mentioned, are something that is probably temporary, but who knows how long those are going to go as well. I know with L and L, you speaking, Gil, of possibly getting another delivery door in the back alley, which would accommodate your customers to pick up at a certain time when that's available for them. I don't think that we would have too many headaches for customers who come. It seems like the issue would be more with management on expressing the fact that we need to have our employees park in a parking lot across the street, advising our people who work there and owners of the buildings to park across the street and allowing the customers to park in front of your business to accommodate them. So I do think that we're all kind of in agreement here with, with some of those things that are being said. And I would be one to entertain the fact that, and it's kind of worded. It's not worded right in, in alternate two, but I would approve the recommendations of the Traffic Advisory Board to deny the request for the thirty minute parking.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
I just want to say, you know, parking is an issue all over town. I mean, we have a business where we have to share parking and I, and I really appreciate, it sounds like there's a spirit of cooperation or at least that, I mean, unfortunately it took coming to a meeting to maybe to have a, a discussion. But again, I think having, not having paid parking, I know there are communities who have paid parking where you have to pay for everything. Emporia is one of those. And I'll tell you, I mean, even though they have a great downtown, it really attracts from what they're really offering. So hopefully, for the businesses, like you said, having five businesses in one location, which is kind of exciting for, for Main Street and downtown, hopefully there's a way to really get along and like you said, really build that goodwill. You know, I, I love our slogan, the world grows here. And then sometimes when the world grows, there's growing pains here in Garden City. So, but I really appreciate each of your sentiments and also just your statements. It sounds like there is a spirit of cooperation and how that works going forward. I'm, I just can, I would encourage you to continue to work it out there, so.
Any other comments? All right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That passes. Thank you.
If I could, just to make sure we understand, it's alternative one that you approved.
Right.
The recommendations.
To deny.
You just read out alternative one.
It is. Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
The next item, Mr. Mayor, would be for the governing body is asked to consider and approve Garden City Police Department Sergeant Ben Weeks for an appointment to the Southwest Regional Emergency Planning Council. Chief Pruitt will talk about that.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. Without reading this exactly to you, what the Southwest Regional Emergency Planning Council is, is a group of, of people that meet that represent an eighteen county area. Two include Morton, Stevens, Seward, Mead, Clark, Stanton, Grant, Haskell, Gray, Ford, Hamilton, Kearney, Finney, Wichita, Greeley, and Scott and Lane Counties. I'm sorry, Scott, Lane and Hodgman Counties. It's a regional emergency planning council. Suggestions, ideas are brought forth, so are projects. And the, each of the regions within the state are allotted a certain amount of money each year and they can go towards projects. And some of those projects have to be law enforcement related, twenty-five percent of the money. And then there's other state-driven initiatives that, that the money goes towards. So I've been on the, on the councils representing the City of Garden City since two thousand fifteen and had pretty good luck with several different projects. And I think it's time to pass the baton to somebody that's a lot smarter than I am. That's Sergeant Ben Weeks. So alternatives are appoint Sergeant Ben Weeks to the Regional Planning Commission or do not and provide guidance. We obviously wholeheartedly recommend of appointing Sergeant Weeks.
Yeah, I move to appoint Sergeant Ben Weeks to the Regional Planning Commission. I agree. He's a great addition.
Sir, second?
Second.
All right. It's moved in second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That passes. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Next item, Mr. Mayor, the governing body is asked to consider and approve one appointment to the local housing authority board. And Kimberly's going to come on, address that.
Good afternoon, everyone.
Hello.
We have five spots. Four are filled currently and we just seen our last one filled. We have our applicant, Elda, who applied. She's currently serving on another board, but it will not be a scheduling issue. They meet Thursdays and we meet Tuesdays. So the alternative is to appoint Elda to a three-year term beginning February of this year. Alternative two is do not appoint Elda and we will find other applicants.
I make a motion. We appoint Elda as appened to a three-year term beginning February first, twenty twenty two.
Second.
All right, we got a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No. I was for, sorry, I was late.
You're slow on the uptake there.
All right, that passes.
Thank you.
Got a train.
It's the seat.
Mr. Mayor, the next item on your agenda is the governing body is asked to consider and approve myself, Mike Muirhead, Public Works and Utilities Director, and Kent Potorff, Electrical Operations Manager, to serve on the Kansas Municipal Energy Agency Board of Directors. As members of the Kansas Municipal Energy Agency, the City of Garden City has had representation on the KMEA Board of Directors. The governing body makes the appointment to the KMEA Board and when Deputy City Manager, the Deputy City Manager left the organization, that opened up Director slot number two on the KMEA Board of Directors and requires a replacement. The Director One position is currently held by myself and that appointment normally would expire on April thirtieth of twenty twenty two. So we're asking that if you're interested, you so desire to do that, would appoint to myself as Director One and Kent Potorff as Director Two to the same board. And these are for two-year terms. We don't make a recommendation on this. Leave it up to you guys to decide that. But there's no financial impact for appointing us to the KMEA Board of Directors. I currently serve on the Executive Committee as a member of that. Kent serves on the EMP Two Committee, so we're well represented.
I move to appoint Mike Muirhead, Director of Public Works and Utilities, as Director Number One to the KMEA Board of Directors, and Kent Potorff, Electrical Operations Manager, as Director Number Two to the same board.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That passes. Thank you.
Hurt you that time.
I was ready.
Yeah. The next item on your agenda, Mr. Mayor, is the governing body is asked to consider and approve appointing Mary Eves to a three-year term on the Public Utilities Advisory Board. The City of Garden City operates five public utilities consisting of water, wastewater, electric, solid waste and stormwater within the city and around the city. The Public Utilities Advisory Board was created to advise the governing body concerning utility rates, investments, infrastructure and major utility projects. Steve Mitchell, who served as Vice Chair of the Public Utilities Advisory Board for his second term, served six years, which ended December thirty first, twenty twenty one, and he served the community as an invaluable member of the Public Utility Advisory Board and he often brought thoughtful ideas to the board's consideration. Steve departure created an opening on the PUAB and Mary Eve has applied to be considered by the governing body to fill that open term. We had not received any other applications to date when this was put together. So the alternatives would be to appoint Mary Eves to a three-year term on the Public Utilities Advisory Board, make another appointment or delay making out an appointment until a later date. Staff has no recommendation. There is no financial impact to making the appointment.
Do we have a motion?
I'll move to appoint Mary Eves to serve a three-year term on the PAUB or PUAB.
Second.
Right. We got a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
You opposed? That passes.
Thank you. The, only other item left, Mr. Mayor, is the consent, is the consent agenda. And if approved, that would be J one through J three.
All right.
I'll make the motion to approve consent agenda.
I'll second.
All right. It's a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, that passes. All right. All right.
And if there's no other business, uh, Mr. Mayor, it'd be time for your Commissioner reports if you so choose.
All right, Commissioner Ortiz.
All right, well, I did everything I could to throw Mike off, but it didn't work. No, thank you for filling in, it was, it was pretty good. You did a smooth job. I don't have much, um, just like to thank everyone for their hard continued work. We just ask that you continue to go out and enjoy the nice weather we have in January. I know it's kind of cold, but I love the, I love the cold. I just wish there was snow. But, uh, yeah, that, I think that's all I have.
Commissioner Euler.
I was excited to see that the airport had a record-breaking year with over twenty-six thousand employments. That's just fantastic, up two hundred and three. So that's great from the year prior. So I love to see that, you know, being able to fly out of Garden City is certainly an advantage that we have and, and to see that we're continuously improving in that area is just fantastic. Also, um, I've enjoyed on the social media update that was provided and I am just so excited when I see all the updates and stuff that you guys put on there, seeing the pictures of the shooting range. I'm kind of a visual person and so to see the, especially when it comes to like Farmland Road and some of those other things, it's like, it makes more sense to me when I can see all that. So thank you for all of the work that you guys do and, and providing those updates because it certainly does help. And good luck to the municipal court next week. They're getting ready to move into their new facility and so that's very exciting as well. And so the finally for me, um, I love seeing that there are people that are willing to serve on all the advisory committees and that we have names to present. And I think if you are interested in serving, this is a great opportunity to learn a little bit more about city government and a little bit more about each of the departments. And so I just encourage people to look at the different advisory boards and consider applying for one.
That's awesome. Thank you. Commissioner O'Nair.
Yeah, so I just also want to thank our social media department. It's very exciting, um, Eighth Street, I'm re, I'm so ready for that to be done. So, um, and how close it's coming, it's, and it really looks, um, really, it's really well done. And if you, you can still walk down there, you can't drive down there, but actually I'm seeing the progress and, and what a difference it's going to make. I just also wanted to echo, um, Commissioner Euler, I almost called you Senator Euler.
Oh, gosh.
Commissioner Euler's about the advisory committees. And you know, if, if you are thinking about an advisory committee, you can also visit the advisory committee meetings. Also, each one of the advisory committees does have a staff who actually oversees or guides those advisory committees and so asks questions, but they do invaluable work for not only the city commission, but really us as, as citizens of Garden City. So I'm really excited about that. There are lots of things, I was thinking, I was running by the big pool the other day and I'm really excited about season two. I, I like saying that because I know Aaron is here and he's really excited about the season, next season coming up. I do want to tell you, um, I had a couple of days, the nice days to walk through our zoo. It, I tell you, if you need a mental break or a stress break from your job or if you just need a, um, I like to do walking meetings and so if you need a wa, a place to do walking meetings, our zoo, Lee Richardson Zoo, is absolutely incredible and so well done. So I just encourage you to do that. I too was really excited, um, I have a couple of trips planned to fly out of Garden City and having the opportunity to fly locally and with a well-done airport. I haven't stopped by Dodge City's Airport recently, but I know, um, just the quality of what we have and what we're about to have. So that's gonna be exciting here coming up in the next couple of years. Other than that, that's all I have.
Thank you. Commissioner Sessa.
Yeah, I just like to, um, comment on the employments and how we're truly becoming a regional airport and, um, it'll really, uh, come home as we actually construct the new, uh, terminal that will definitely become the regional airport of Western Kansas. Exciting times for our community on, uh, the various, uh, different building projects that the city has going on. Definitely like, uh, the social media report that our communications team has put together and keep up the good work on that, as well as all of our staff that does a great job every day on what you guys do to keep our city running. And that's all I've got.
All right. Well, ditto to everything that people said. A good story. But thank, but thank you, Mike, for stepping in and Stuart for stepping in, um, to cover the, the, those shoes today. Also, just with downtown, please just keep in mind, um, that, that cooperation that has to exist when we have such a large amount of public parking. If you do have a business or you have employees or something, please do keep that in mind when you are deciding where to park or you're telling your employees to park, not to infringe on the spaces in front of everybody else. Again, they're public parking spaces, but please keep in mind that, that is parking in front of a different, uh, somebody else's business and, and try to keep those, um, spots, um, open for those businesses if possible. And then the last thing, just because it, we just kind of, I mean, it was just on the consent agenda, um, just, um, talking about Legacy Crossing, that looks like it's gonna be a, a great addition to our city and we're glad that that's moving forward. That's gonna be something that, once that gets going, um, I think a lot of our region will take notice again about the growth that we're doing and, and it'll be good for us. So with that, we'll call, meeting closed. Thank you.